All righty. Ready? All right. Welcome, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation Pastor Don Lawrence. Grace Church, welcome. How are you?
Good. Thank you very much.
Good. Thanks for being here.
Heavenly Father, I'd like to begin just with a moment to remember the men and women of the armed services who are deployed all around the world. And we just pray that you'd be with them, that you'd watch over them, that you would guide and direct them, give them wisdom in the decisions they make. And we pray for their safety and for a quick return home. We also pray for the families here of those loved ones, that you would comfort them and be with them as well. We appreciate the freedoms that they defend for us and for others around the world. We especially appreciate our freedom of self-government. And to that end, we pray for our act of government here this evening at this meeting. We pray for these leaders in our community, that you'd be with them, guide them, direct them, give them wisdom in the decisions they make on our behalf. We pray that you would bless them. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank Beth. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dickie.
Here.
Councilmember Legere.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thanks, Beth. First item we've got is on the public appearance report of the agenda is recognition of past service for Richard Gole from our Board of Adjustment. Folks that don't mean a great deal, but are very important. And he served for a great deal of time. Richard, are you here this evening? Didn't see him come in. Let me just share a little bit, and we've got a nice certificate of appreciation for Richard. He served in the Board of Adjustment from February 1st, 2005 until February 9th, 2012. He held positions as chairman from 2009 until his departure, and a position of vice chairman in 2007 and '08. He's a very valuable member of the Board of Adjustment and served with pride for the residents of our community. And we thank Richard for his service to our town, and we'll make sure he gets the certificate and a fountain pen. Boy, that's a lot of service on a commission, so we really appreciate his service and leadership on the Board of Adjustment. Next item is a proclamation for April declaring it Parkinson's Awareness Month. I didn't have it pulled up here, so give me a second. No sign in there. Is there a printed copy of it? Yeah. Andrew. It's probably the original. And, uh, thank you very much. And, um, we all know that Mr. Bruce Florence passed away recently too, so it's, uh, it's important to, it's a good time for us to recognize Parkinson's and awareness for this month of April. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas Parkinson's disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder of the central nervous system, which has unique impact on each patient, and whereas there are over 1 million Americans diagnosed with Parkinson's disease, and whereas increased education and research are needed to help find more effective treatments with fewer side effects and ultimately to cure for Parkinson's disease, whereas April has been proclaimed as Parkinson's Awareness Month for all to recognize the need for more research and help in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's disease. Now therefore, I, J. A. T. Schlumpf, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April 2012 as Parkinson's, excuse me, Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in the town of Fountain Hills dated this 15th day of March 2012." So, remember, and, uh, and for, we have a great group of folks working and supporting one another here, um, in regards to Parkinson's. So, keep that up, and April will be Parkinson's Awareness Month again here in Fountain Hills. Now we get to move to an update from Chris Coyle, Division Manager of Republic Services of Phoenix regarding the town's curbside trash and recycling program and not-for-profit rewards program. Chris, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Good evening.
And following this, we will have call to the public. If you wish to speak, make sure you get your cards turned in to Bev.
All right. Good evening. I am Chris Coyle, General Manager for Republic Services. Thank you, Mayor Schlumpf, Vice Mayor Dickie, and all the council members for allowing me to, inviting me out here to provide this short update on the town's curbside trash and recycling program. Um, first, I'm happy to report that service has been excellent. We implemented full service throughout the town in July of 2011, and to date, we've achieved a service efficiency rate of 99.96 percent for the 82,337 services we had in the month of February. We aren't perfect, but we're working towards it. We will continue to evaluate each and every service issue and strive for service perfection in Fountain Hills. We also have remained active in the community since implementation in July. Republic proudly sponsored Oktoberfest with monetary support and also provided free service for that event. As you all know, the event was a success. We also worked in conjunction with the Boy Scouts during the holiday season. Republic Services, instead of picking up the Christmas trees and just disposing of them, publicized the Boy Scout campaign to collect those trees and then ask for donation to support the troops and their events. The Boy Scouts were ecstatic with the results, and we plan to do the same this next holiday season. We're also planning an early implementation of the new curbside program in Eagle Mountain. We've been working closely with the HOA to schedule this transition. Although their current contract doesn't end until August, we've been working closely with them to pick a date that would be most effective considering the amount of winter visitors, uh, the winter visitor population in that HOA. So we will be transitioning over to the new program early in April, the first two Fridays in April this year. This will eliminate unnecessary cart confusion with residents being out of town already. Hopefully, most of them will still be in town, and also make it a smooth transition to the new curbside program. Finally, I'd like to report on the not-for-profit rewards program. On the display here is a letter that was addressed to the town. Republic has worked exhaustively on a solution. Unfortunately, current, the current reward structure is not able to accommodate this type of service. Republic is presently working to develop a web application that will provide the ability to donate earned points to local nonprofit and charitable organizations. The launch of that program is anticipated by late November this year or earlier if we're able to finalize the program specifics. So, thank you for the opportunity to provide this update. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Coyle? Councilmember Elke?
Mr. Coyle, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Can you give us a little more specifics as far as what the other recycling program that you're referring to? Is this going to be involved with Recycle Bank? Is this going to be a separate program altogether? Is there any additional details you can provide?
Unfortunately, I don't have any further detail than what's been provided in the letter to counsel.
Is there any schedule as far as follow-up with, with the counsel? Or are we to wait until November for the program to be implemented?
That is the only timeline I have at this time is November. Thank you.
Anything else? Counsel? Counselmember Dickie?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chris, do you anticipate giving us any sort of reports on the amount of recycling that's actually taking place? I know we've had a little bit from Raymond, but at some point, just, just giving us a little bit of an update on that.
Yeah, I can provide, over the last two months, the month of February was a great month where we had 212 tons of curbside recycling collected, and the month of January was 192 tons. So there's some recent information. I'm sure historical information is out there, and we'll continue to provide that information to the town on a monthly basis.
Good. Counselmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
So, if we were 2/12 in February, do you have a feel for where we started in July, August, when we were kicking the program off?
I would only have a gut feeling at this point. I would say we started off below 100 tons a month, so it's grown significantly. Very impressive. The town has done a great job getting on board with the recycling program.
And it's just continuing to progress, uh, to gain momentum?
Correct. It's continuing to gain momentum. Um, you know, anecdotally, I get stopped all the time when people find out I'm from Republic Services. They say, you know, "I was against the one, the one-hauler program, but I really find it really easy to recycle with the new two-cart system." So, um, that's working. Um, keep in mind, as the winter visitors go away, you will see those numbers go down. Okay? So you'll see that dip during the summer, and then it'll pick back up during the winter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselmember Elke?
Mr. Coyle, and Mayor, if this is appropriate for Bev to do, Mr. Coyle, if you would mind, we may have a question or two that may be raised from the call to the public relating to trash. I don't know if we can prioritize those so Mr. Coyle doesn't have to stay throughout all the questions. If we, if we do have any questions from, from the public.
I'd be glad to stay.
If you could stay just until we address any questions that our public may have.
Be glad to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. I will. The, um, I wanted to, before we get into, um, actually, we'll do call to the public first, and then I have something else to add. But, uh, thank Chris for your report.
Thank you, Mayor.
And as far as call to the public, if you would, since it's not an agendized topic for discussion and debate, um, there's probably a few folks that have additional questions. Maybe you can catch them on the way out, or if there are things that need to be addressed, you could perhaps do that.
Understood. I'd be glad to.
Move into call to the public so you can hear things, if there are comments related to this item.
Mr. Mayor, if there are comments in that people have specified for this item, they can come up now instead, and you can address them as much as you want.
Oh, during this item?
During this item, since this is agenda.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Andrew. Um, is it noted on there, on there?
No, Mayor.
You want to give the names, and then obviously, they, they would know.
Okay.
The individuals.
Uh, Bob Deppi, Andy Bell, Jean Schlecker, Bo James.
All right, good.
Linda Bardot.
Welcome, Mr. James. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you, Mayor, and counsel. I'd like to say that I am most disappointed in this report or update that Republic Services has given. At the town council meeting before the ordinance was adopted, before the contract was signed, when the question was asked by, I believe, Mr. Legere, or Councilman Legere, if there would be possible to have donated points, the Recycle Bank representative started to say no, and Mr. Coyle stood up, interrupted her, and said, "We will make it happen. We will make it happen." And you can look at the videotape and see, I think those are his exact words. It's in the minutes of the meeting. I am most disappointed. It is now nineteen, 17 months since that council meeting, and we still haven't seen it. He's talked about having a program in November of this year, which would be 24 months after we stated, "We will make it happen." It doesn't seem to me like it should be that hard a job. A simple possible solution might be just to say, "I've earned 2,151 points. I give it to the charitable organization, whether it's Quanis, VFW, AmVets, uh, the church." And then that church would use those points the same as they would get if they do the recycling through Recycle Bank. I'm sure there are many other ways of doing it. But it just seems to me that when someone stands up at a public hearing, when a contract is being considered, and when an ordinance is being considered, and makes a positive statement as emphatically as, "We will make it happen," that should have been included in the ordinance before it was passed. I would think that would be included just by the fact that it was made at the public hearing. I'm disappointed that counsel did not make that a part of the contract when you had such emphatic statement that we would make it happen. And that is, um, end of my statement on that subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Coyle, is there anything you want to add to that as far as answer? You seem to be, not have more than the November date at this point.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I have nothing further to add to that or comment on to it. We're disappointed also that we cannot provide this at this time. Again, we've worked exhaustively, and we'll work hard towards that November date.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go to call to the public.
Linda Bardot.
I heard Chris Bordeaux have something on that item.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I, I kind of agree with what Mr. James has said, and I did look at that meeting. It was, I think it was the second town meeting I was ever at. That was the one that lasted like one in the morning. It was really long. And I do remember them saying that. I went back and checked, and that's what they said. I'd like to ask Councilmember Elke, since he was formerly involved with the Quanis. They are one of the folks who have been injured by not being able to claim the recycled rewards. So, I'm curious now how much money is being lost by that organization. I'm also a member of the American Legion Post 58 and AmVets, and they're impacted as well. So, that's my main concern, is how much money are we losing by not being able to have that service available? Thank you.
I'm not sure if Counselmember Elke has, um, numbers, but I do know that recycling and giving of recycling items to the nonprofits is, has not been prohibited. So, recycling to those nonprofits and the containers that they might maintain or otherwise have picked up to garner, you know, recycling dollars has always been available. But, um, and then Counselmember Elke, do you want to respond at all?
Yeah. Interestingly enough, it wouldn't, it would be, it's the opposite of what, um, what you might expect. I think there's been a backlash. There's actually, the numbers have increased as far as the donations to the Quanis Club itself. I, I think that it's probably for two different reasons. One, words getting out even more. We have the folks that were donating to it, and it's increased over time. And two, I think that there is a little bit of a backlash for those that didn't want to go to the single trash hauler, that they want it, their recyclables to go to the nonprofit. So I think we've seen an increase as a result of that as well. And, and I know that just from speaking from a couple folks that were donating. Thank you.
Mr. Coyle?
And one last comment. By no means am I denying, we, a representative from Republic Services stood up, stood up at that council meeting, um, November 2010 now, and did say, "We will make it happen." And to this point, we have not made it happen. Shame on us. We are working to make that right. Unfortunately, the best timeline I have, timeline I have right now is November.
Thanks, Mr. Coyle.
Thank you very much.
Just, uh, obviously encourage others to continue to donate at the nonprofits, and they can benefit directly from that. But it certainly would be nice to have folks that garner credits through Recycle Bank or other program to be able to donate those points or whatever it might look like when it rolls out in November. We'll go to call to the public.
Here, we have five speaker cards. Bob Deppi, Andy Bell, Jean Schlecker, Bo James, and Linda Bardot. Bob Deppi?
Welcome, Mr. Deppi.
Thank you. Uh, again, my name is Bob Deppi. I live in Boulder. Uh, two weeks ago, I stood here, uh, asking you to enforce your town codes on weeds. This past Monday, they cleaned up the lot in question. I don't know who to thank because I have not received any correspondence from the town, even though I have an open complaint. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, I will thank you. Uh, this should make me happy, but it took me two and a half months of complaints before the issue was addressed. It's obvious that the town employees did not want to address the issue or enforce town codes. Only a public complaint and a newspaper article forced the issue. Mr. Mayor and counsel, may I suggest that you start enforcing your codes so other citizens do not have the same problems I had? If you do not intend to enforce codes, you should announce which codes you don't intend to enforce, and change the code to reflect what you are going to do. Thanks again for the happy ending.
Thank you, Mr. Deppi.
Andy Bell?
Welcome, Ms. Bell.
Hello, and thank you for your mayorship, and we'll miss you.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm Andy Bell. I'm a resident in Fountain Hills. I live on North Shore Drive. I'm here to exercise my freedom of speech, and I don't believe it's required to give any disclosures, except I promise you, I am not wanted by America's most wanted. I have a few questions to the counsel to consider at the end of my, my period here. My topic is my strong disapproval of Vice Mayor Ginny Dickie claiming freedom of speech and being defended as such in her personal email about her personal opinion, yet feeling it's important to include in this personal email her vice mayorship position of this town, as well as all of her other titles, including mom, grandma. This is precedent-setting. It's not against freedom of speech. I am speaking against freedom of position. My first question is to our legal counsel. Is, is this a requirement when all, or anybody on counsel writes anything to anybody to place your town position on the communication? Was there legal recommendation to do so? If yes, was it told, yes, you really have to do that? That's a problem. If it was not required or requested, should I do this? That's a problem. My question is also, if anybody on counsel writes an opinion letter to anything, are you putting on your position as a council member? If so, please disclose it so we know. One of my last questions is that if this is okay and not reprimanded, does this give counsel permission to do so? One small, for instance, is if any of you do a personal letter, email to Chaparral City Water, is it okay to say, "I'm signing as a council member," or as the mayor, or the vice council, "But I'm really just a resident, and my bill, my, my account number is." I'd like you to think about potential consequences of allowing this to be okay. The, the town of Fountain Hills Vice Mayor was not, was called numerous times on the radio an idiot by the radio announcer. The impression of business beware in Fountain Hills was heard loud and clear. This is not about freedom of speech. This is just what I wanted to say. It's about freedom of position, and I'd like you to think about it and perhaps speak about it amidst you. And I thank you.
Jean Schlecker?
Welcome, Mr. Schlecker.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. So, lighter note. Um, I'm Jean Schlecker. I live on Blackford. Tonight, I'm not here to, to bring up concerns to the council, but instead to highlight an important upcoming event. I'm here to ask citizens in this chamber, and the citizens watching the internet or later on Channel 11, to please mark their calendars to attend one of the two upcoming open houses regarding signage in our community. The dates planned are March 27th and April 11th. As the council knows, and many businesses and residents know, there's been a committee meeting for eight months on what our signage should look like going forward. I'd like to acknowledge the Fountain Hills Times for publishing reports of our progress over the past eight months, and is now also publishing a series of stories on the committee. Around 30 substantial changes have been documented as consensus recommendations from the committee. Sign regulations are in everybody's interest in the community. They impact everyone in the town. The zoning ordinance for the town of Fountain Hills says that sign regulations are intended to encourage, attract the signage for businesses and services, optimizing the availability of information while promoting the general welfare by creating a more aesthetically appealing community. Signs impact business and sales tax revenue for sure, but they also impact the visual perception of the community, to the community and to visitors, to our beautiful community. And they ultimately have an impact on property values. So I'm reaching out to all vested interests in the community to come to see what changes are being proposed. Vested means business folks and residents. We want your feedback. Again, the open houses are planned for 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on March 27th and April 11th at the Community Center. Stop by, even if it's only for a few minutes. We'd love to see a large turnout from the entire community. Following the open houses, the final recommendations, we'll come back before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Council. Feedback from the open houses, of course, will be included, and package is provided to the Zoning Commission and to the Town Council. Thank you.
Bo James?
Good evening again. I just, as you know, Saturday is St. Patrick's Day, and I just wanted to invite personally all you members on the rostrum or the podium here, and everybody on TV and in the audience here to come down and enjoy some of the fun at the Beer Garden run by the VFW and the AmVets together. And I also encourage everybody to visit the Art on the Avenue and the Farmer's Market happening the same day. So just, best of luck to the Irish. Thank you.
May I ask a question? When is the fountain going to be green?
The fountain turns green at 12:00, and the festivities in the park by the, by the AmVets and VFW is from 10:00 to 6:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Linda Bardot?
And was the sign committee from 6:00 to 8:00? Is that what she said? Okay, thanks. I didn't quite get that. Thanks for clearing that, Councilmember. Okay, I was under the wrong impression. I thought that they were downed funds, so thanks for clearing that up. Um, one quick thing, I had participated in the citizens' government that was put on by the town, and I thought it was a great course. And I hope people at home who have an interest in finding more out about the town would take the time to do so. It's really not that long. It's a couple hours, and it lasts a few weeks, but it really does give you an insight into what's going on for those who are interested in making a difference. I will make one quick comment about the whole KFYS never. I think it's perfectly fine to boycott or boycott anything you like. I think what was unfortunate was the fact that you did have the word "Vice Mayor" in there, and they really latched on to that for days and days and days. And the one comment that really bothered me was when they called you the, I think it was the Vice, the night manager of Fountain Hills, and it wasn't good. It made our town look like a podunk, little nothing town. And that is not the image we want right now, especially after being at those citizen meetings. I don't know if most people at home understand how little revenue the town gets, where it comes from. It only comes from sales tax and a little bit from the state, and we really do need all the businesses here that we can get. And it just gave a bad business flavor to the town. So, I'm hoping calmer, clearer minds will prevail, and we can all agree that maybe that's not the wisest thing to do in the future. I think you're welcome to write any letter you want to, but maybe leaving that off of there would be a good idea if we want to try and grow the town and attract more people in. So, that's pretty much it. But thank you.
Thank you. Was that it? All right. Hey, before we go into the consent items, I wanted to, uh, was going to point out the St. Patrick's Day, because everybody wants to see the green fountain, and they yell at me if I, if they miss it. So, spread the word, green fountain, noon, and of course, lots of celebrations down there Saturday as well. So it'll be, and hopefully the weather will hold out. Since this is also our town managed, new town manager's first meeting with us, wanted to officially welcome Mr. Ken Buchanan, and we are so pleased to have you.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to be here.
And also, uh, recognize once again, and we've talked about her in her absence at the last meeting, but we wanted to recognize Ms. Julie Getty, who's our deputy town manager, but did a tremendous job as our interim town manager. Julie, we are indebted to you greatly, and we so much appreciate the work you've done. Thank you very much. Wonderful job. And I know Ken's been getting to know quite a few people already. And how many hours on the job, Ken?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one hours on the job? So, you'll, if you haven't met Ken, you'll appreciate him, and I know he's looking forward to meeting as many as he can, folks as he can. Move on to the consent agenda now. I'll look for a motion in a minute. First item on the consent agenda is consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from February 21 and March 1st, 2012. Second item is consideration of approving the wine festival license, wine fair license submitted by Cocapelli Winery for participation in the Thunderbird Arts Annual Fountain Hills Fine Art and Wine Affair to be on March 23, 24, and 25. Item three, consideration of approving a wine festival license, wine fair license submitted by Studio Vino for participation in that same Thunderbird Arts Festival. And, um, that concludes the consent agenda. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dickie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Legere?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero? Mayor Seven Zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to the regular agenda, and it's always great to welcome new council, to appoint new commissioners to our Board of Adjustment. And we're doing that in item four here, consideration of appointing two citizens to Board of Adjustment for the period beginning March 15, 2012 through January 31st, 2013. I move to appoint Mr. Nick Seaman and Gary Gluns. Can I get a second?
Second.
And I don't know if they're here, but I don't, didn't see Gary. I don't see Nick here. We do have our chair here, is that correct? Thank you for serving, and I know you'll enjoy these two if we all approve them in a minute. Second here, all in favor of this appointment, these two appointments indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero.
Great, and thank you to those two for stepping up to serve as new commissioners on our Board of Adjustment, and thank you for leading them and continuing to serve. Item five, consideration of a professional service agreement with J-2 Engineering and Environmental Design LLC for the Avenue median improvements in the amount of $147,989.98 and 98 cents. How are you, Paul?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. The Avenue of the Fountains median was constructed in the early 1970s, and since then, the electrical systems, irrigation systems, fountains, landscaping, hardscape are in need of some extensive rehabilitation or reconstruction. We have a board over here on the side that shows the aerials from before, when, before the avenue was built to 2011. You can see in, around 1992, you can barely even see the median because the canopy of the trees were all up and down the, all up and down the median. Since 1998 till today, we have lost several of the large trees. They're non-native. They only get the surface irrigation for the root system. We'll lose those in large storms. Other items, the roots are cracking, the irrigation system, electrical systems, fountains, the pathway, if you notice, the brick pavers out there are all heaving. So we want to take a look at that. Currently, the, there's two waterfall fountains with pools. They're on automatic refill timers because they have leaks that we can't identify. Last month, we shut them down. They were losing a couple inches of water a day, and after about five days, the pumps were pulling in air. So in the summer, we have to almost, we have to refill those pools every day. If they get worse, we don't have the operational funds to do large extensive repairs on those fountains, so those could potentially be shut down if those leaks get worse. The proposed project for a redesign of the avenue is budgeted in the CIP for $1.8 million. $1 million comes from the downtown fund. $800,000 comes from the CIP fund. If you look at the five-year capital project, CIP, there would still be $1.4 million in the downtown fund after four years. So just want to make a note that we're not taking all that money. The proposed project was presented at a September 2011 work study in more detail. We again presented it at a December 2011 work study as well. There's two ways a municipality can select an architect or an engineer for professional services. Arizona revised statutes allows you to go out for a request for qualifications, where you write, write up the request for qualifications. You advertise it in a newspaper. The professionals send in their statement of qualifications. You review them solely on qualifications. You cannot bid out professional services per state statutes. So that's one way to do it, and that, then you would rank them, hold interviews, and select somebody based on qualifications. Then you negotiate a scope and a contract with them. If you can't negotiate a contract, then you move on to number two on your list, and so on and so forth. That process can take anywhere from two to three months. You're also allowed, under state statutes, to direct select for professional services. Statutes allow you to direct select an architect for a contract up to $250,000 and an engineering firm up to $500,000. What staff, what staff did is we worked with J-2 Environmental Engineering and Design, and we put together a scope of work. They came out, they toured the avenue, they brought out their electrical subconsultants, and then we developed a fee and negotiated from there. J-2 Design has done numerous parks in the valley, trails with water features, streetscapes. They've done sidewalks for the town. They actually designed our McDowell Mountain Preserve Trailhead, so they're familiar with our designs. So based on those factors, their qualifications, we contacted J-2. We negotiated a scope and fee. We started off in about the $220,000 range, and we ended up down in about the $175,000 range. That was working on scope and their, and their hourly rates. So that's what you have before you today. The contract is broken into three different parts. There's a, there's a master plan phase, there's a design phase, and a construction phase. The master plan phase, they'll take an inventory and analyze everything that's out on the avenue. They'll look at the concrete, the irrigation, the electrical, the fountains. They also have an allowance for an arborist to come out and take a look at the trees, which one should remain, which one should go. From that, they'll, they'll have some public meetings, we'll get public input, we'll want to talk with the, with the movie theater group for crosswalks, we'll want to talk with the Chamber Art Fair, because if that's going to be the ultimate place for the art fair, we want to make sure that their electrical requirements are met. We'll talk with the Farmer's Market, if they're going to be there, you know, in the future, want to make sure that they have space. So we'll get together all the stakeholders, the citizens, take their input. They'll come up with two master plan designs, conceptual designs. We'll present those at public meetings. Council can look at those, and then there'll be a final master plan, what we want to build, and they'll, they'll do a cost estimate for construction. The master plan portion of the contract is just under $20,000. The town manager actually has authority to sign that contract if it's under $20,000, but we thought it best to come to council, so you can all hear what we're doing, so we're not, you know, we're open about everything. So after the master plan phase, J-2 cannot proceed to the design phase without written approval from the town. So we could, if council wishes, we can stop the project after the, the master plan phase. If you look in the draft CIP, this project straddles two fiscal years, so you'll see we have $100,000 for design this year, and then we had $150,000 for next year. Obviously, we negotiated a contract that's much less than that, so when we do this, when we do the update to the draft CIP, we'll probably look at putting in $50,000 this year, will get us through the master plan phase, and roughly maybe another $150,000. We don't know if staff or council will want them to look at something else out there, so we want to leave ourselves a little bit of room. The boards in the back, we presented those at the September 2011 work study. That's just a high-level concept. That's not anything that, that J-2 put together. Just shows what we could do, shows a meandering path. We would work, and we'd actually also work with the Art Committee for places for public art as well, so we'd redo that, redo some fountains, maybe make a large courtyard area that could be used for special events and performances. And with that, staff recommends approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Council, questions for Paul or anyone else? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, you, you're saying we're going to spread this over two fiscal years. Can you give us a closer timeframe on what, or a schedule, I should say, for the master plan phase, the design phase, and the construction phase?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Brown. We would anticipate the, the master plan phase to take approximately three months. And if we move immediately into design, we would estimate another five to six months for design. That gets us to the end of 2012. We would like to bid the, we don't want to bid the project out during the holiday season. We would like to bid it out in, in January 2013. We'd probably get the bids in at the end of January, early February, then we could roll into construction after the February art fair. Not knowing the scope of, you know, the final master plan, what we want to construct, roughly estimating a four, five, six-month construction period. So then that would put us into maybe July, you know, July, August. Anything happens in there, because there's a lot of unknowns out there, there's not really good as-bills, so we're going to hit something. You know, we're leaving ourselves a little wiggle room, be done by the November, November art fair in 2013, so trying to plan between those two fairs.
Well, that's certainly aggressive, having the three-month master plan and then six months for design. I'm pleased with that.
Thanks, Paul. Any other comments, questions on the design? Councilmember Leger.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, thank you for your presentation and your, and your staff report. Looking at the master plan phase, which is at a cost of $19,700 so forth, $727, in response to Councilman Brown's question, it looks like this master planning phase will pretty much take us to the end of this fiscal year.
Correct.
Is that a good estimation? And looking at your, your draft CIP, as you mentioned, mentioned a few minutes ago, for design is like $100,000 in there, and then in 12, 13, there is $150,000. With that, with that being said, I would feel more comfortable at perhaps considering amending the motion, and at this point in time, in this particular fiscal year, just go for the $19,000. That $174,000 is, is larger than what you've presented in your, your design draft scenario here, so I'm going to...
There's no motion yet?
I understand that.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm going to reserve that judgment, but I'm just thinking along those lines. And the reason I'm putting that out now is I wanted to ask you, would that present an issue for you in terms of moving this project forward?
Mayor and Councilmember Leger, if I'm hearing you correctly, if you were to approve the full $174,000 contract tonight, they physically couldn't do that much work in three months. So when we, this draft of CIP is a little bit old, so when we revise it again, we're going to show pretty much just the, the master plan phase in this year and the remainder of the design in the next fiscal year plus construction. And if you were to, and are you talking about just approving the $20,000 tonight? Definitely can do that. As Councilmember Brown pointed out, it is a pretty aggressive schedule, and then we would potentially, once we get done, we'd have to come back for council for approval of the design phase, depending where that, when we get done, where that council meeting follows. You know, if it's in July, we could lose another whole month, because there won't be a, typically isn't any council meetings in July. So we would like to be able to just, if with approval, roll right into the design. And we'd probably present that at a, at a work study or offline.
Mayor, if I may, just, just one more question, Paul. It, it appears that you would be coming back to us regardless, whether we allocate the $174 or the...
Correct.
Or the $19. And pay as you go, if that's what you need, that's, that's kind of what I'm comfortable with, in that we're coming back to this council or perhaps a new council to, to move it forward. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? So because the, we've gotten down the road here a little bit, this is an option that we could consider as well. There's a contract in here, so would, would that be a monumental change as far as the contract revision?
I'd have to ask the town attorney, but I think it would just be an amended motion.
Mr. Mayor, I think we could certainly take the motion if, and Councilmember Leger's trying to meet his requirements without changing the contract too much, should be pretty easy, because the prior written authorization that's already mentioned in the contract, either by the motion itself, or if you'd like some contract language, actually say written authorization after approved by town council, either one's fine, as long as they understand, the staff understands that written authorization means following council approval.
Thanks.
So we can do it either way. I'm fine with it.
So who'd like to make a motion? Councilmember Hanson.
I could support Henry's suggestion. Last fall, when we started talking about this, I said that I thought we should wait and see what the results were of the bond election for the streets. And now that we know what that is, that we maybe need to reprioritize. And we know from many of Paul's reports, we have a lot of, of our infrastructure and buildings that, that are in need of maintenance and repair. So I just don't know, I could go along with the assessment to see what exactly we have, and what are the major problems, what are the minor problems, what would we have to deal with right away to keep from having to repair something every day and, and spending more money in the repairs? But I think it would be good to find out what we absolutely need, and then wait for the next step to decide, okay, so then how much of that do we want to deal with now?
Thank you. And Paul, would that cover this initial portion, cover that, those items, or give us those answers?
Yeah, it would give us the assessment of the current conditions and, and then the general master plan of, of the avenue.
Okay. Councilmember Leger.
Mayor, if I may, Andrew, amending is one way to move. I simply could make the, the main motion with changing the figure, so we're not going for an amendment. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Leger, you can do it one of two ways. You can either change the figure to just have it be for task one, or task one and two, so we can see which one, task one and two. Or you can have it be that, as it currently is, it can't proceed to step two, which is the $174,000 piece without prior written authorization. It could just say prior written authorization following approval by the town council. And that gives the town council the breaks. That way, you don't have to go out and do another contract. It's in place, and if you put the brakes on it, and it's done at $20,000, if you don't put the brakes on it, then you can authorize the next step.
Is there, is there a third option, just to replace $174 with that $19,000?
No, that was the first option. The, the contract just be amended and take everything out after the first piece.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mayor, I move to consider a professional service agreement with J-2 Engineering and Environmental Design LLC for the Avenue median improvements in the amount of $19,727.06.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Elke.
I just wanted to make sure, all right, so we're amending, if I understand the motion correctly, we're going to amend the contract. Does this include the written authorization, or are we wiping out the contract entirely and taking out those portions?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, it would be taking out those portions, so that we would just have a contract of the first portion, the master plan portion only. The construction documents portion would not be included, and the post-design services obviously would be included.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, we got a motion. Everyone in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero.
Good. Thank you very much. On item six, council discussion direction of town manager Ken Buchanan. Anything that we mentioned to carry forward, following up, obviously, with Republic and planning on them coming back in November, or perhaps sooner? Item seven, summary of council requests and reports on recent activity. Ken, anything you want to report on your first eighty, maybe two hours now?
Well, I think Mr. Burns at the Times pretty much said it the best, what I saw. A very involved community, very active community. I was here last Saturday, some of the events, you know, the ongoing events, very well put together for that. The staff, I was very, very pleased with what I was seeing, with, with the level of staff that we have, and how active they are in the programs that, that we're trying to do there. Little concerned with coverage of how being able to cover all the levels of service that we've been requested to provide, but that's ongoing with the time of the times that all municipals, governments are having that challenge today. And lastly, again, I'm trying to put a list together of all the things that I'd like to, to review, both with staff and with council in the future, to try to get, get up to speed of, you know, the, the way the Fountain Hills, what you want to do with the strategic plan, what we're doing with the budget, to get it implemented. But first things first, is trying to get those things completed. So happy to be here, darn happy to be here, actually. If we can get a house sold, we'll be here in April with the community, so I don't have to worry about the drive anymore with that. But again, with, working with some of the staff members and looking at some of the projects that we've, we've got going, I want to be able to make sure that those are followed through and get them completed.
Ken, well, welcome again, Ken.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight, adjournment. Can I get a motion?
So move.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.